Call the council to order at 7:02. Please stand and join me in a salute to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Withers, would you kindly read the notice of... Oh, no, it's not a special meeting. I am going to suspend the rules, thank you. At this time, I entertain a motion to suspend the rules. Thank you, motions in order. Any questions or comments? The purpose of suspending the rules tonight is because we're going to go a little off schedule, given the... This microphone's going to drive me nuts. James?
It's not James.
Who's... Austin?
Austin.
Because I don't want to hear myself all night. The purpose of tonight is to... So that we can go through the public hearings, then we'll recess, and we'll go back to... We'll have committee of the whole sort of out of order. I just want everybody to know why we're suspending the rules. Any questions or comments? Hearing none requires a roll call vote, beginning with Counselor Jackson. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Waterman?
Yes.
Conti?
Yes.
Popis?
Yes.
Vice President Farica?
Yes.
Mr. Delicio?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Tenier, Zernier. Thank you, we are operating under suspended rules. At this time, I entertain a motion to approve the records of May 7, 2019. Thank you, motions in order. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Thank you, motion passes. At this time, I entertain a motion to approve the records of May 14, 2019. Thank you, motions in order. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Thank you, motion passes. Moving right along, we're going to go right into the public hearings. Mr. Withers, would you kindly read the notice for the first public hearing this evening? Thank you, Mr. President. The first public hearing tonight is relative to recommended changes to the revised ordinances of the City of Attleboro, Chapter 9, Section 45, as it pertains to Dog Park. Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak in favor? Is there anyone here to speak in favor? Anyone here to speak in opposition? Anyone here to speak in opposition? Anyone neither for nor against? Seeing none, Counselor Holmes, I think we'll keep this... So, hold on one second. Unless anybody disagrees, we'll keep this public hearing open. I thought that we talked to the... Do we... Do we... You need to keep it open.
I think if there's one of them, yes.
There's one thing outstanding.
Yes, there's one to come to speak.
Vice President Cooper?
President Cooper, and to Counsel Holmes. Even though this isn't in my committee, I did receive a phone call from the individual who runs the Dog Park today. The gentleman who has all of the information as it pertains to this particular ordinance
Right.
is unavailable this evening and asked for continuance so that he could be here to present his testimony.
Great, so I think we should keep this public hearing open until September 3. Does that get... Is that covered? Okay. So, we'll keep this public hearing open until 9:03. Notice of the next public hearing.
Yes, the next public hearing is relative to following load order for water main work on Steer Street. It's a $1.7 million loan.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak in favor? Courtney, come on up.
Courtney Wanchill, Superintendent Water Department. Steer Street, several years ago, we contracted with Tater and Howard to perform an asset study for the entire city distribution system, to look at conditions of the mains, residences affected, businesses affected, conditions of the pipes, and basically prioritize all of the water mains in the city in need of either replacement or repair. Steer Street rated really high on the list, and to give you some idea, I was looking through records just today. Since 2006, we've had 15 major main breaks on Steer Street. Nine of them have been in the last five years. And actually, we had one of them... Counselor Conti was out at the Water Department one day in July, and we were going to be meeting on a separate issue, and my foreman was actually unavailable to meet with us because he was on a water main break on Steer Street that very day.
Any... Any other... Counselor Conti, any questions for Courtney?
I don't. Courtney, when you and I met on Roy Avenue, we talked about putting together a list of the... Excuse me, I need my phone for my hearing today, but I seem to be unable to make a complete decision. We talked about putting together a list, and Linda Alge was standing in for Virginia Stewart, and she, to my amazement, put together a complete list of when the council voted for water projects through the history of the City of Attleboro where records could be accessed. Where was Steer Street on that list?
Steer Street has a rough installation date. Part of it was 1950, and the remainder was 1990.
1950 and 19...
90.
90. So, we're replacing, obviously, the part that was installed in 1950.
Actually, the whole stretch has seen repeated breaks.
And what... What will be... What will be learned as we are replacing it? Will we be able to learn why we've had repeated failures in that area?
We hope to. Steer Street tends to be, you know, all sorts of different breaks that happen. Sometimes you can tell. Reed Street that was voted a couple of months ago. When they go out and they repair breaks on Reed Street, what they see is repeated breaks right at the bell, which basically, it's the joints are... They're off kilter. So, they're seeing just the same type of break over and over again, so that one's an installation problem. Steer Street would... They're kind of all over the place, so we're not really sure.
So, we don't have... Up to this date, we don't have a consistent theory of why Steer Street has failed so quickly. And when we do the excavations to repair the pipe, will one be developed? Can we do an analysis of why Steer Street's been such a problem?
We could. I actually brought our consultant with us. Where is he?
He's right there.
Right there. Sorry. If Matt wants to speak to it, I can...
So, my name is Matthew Barry. I'm a project engineer with Tater and Howard. We've been the consulting engineer for the Water Department on a number of these projects. And part of what you're speaking to for Steer Street can be done during construction. You can actually remove the old water main from the existing trench. The new water main goes in the same trench, and we can take pieces of that pipe, and we can send it out to a lab. We have them sandblasted, and we can look at the integrity of the metal. Has there been metal loss that has caused the thickness of the wall of the pipe to be reduced? We can also do a break test where we physically crush the pipe to see what the strength of the pipe is. There's a number of reasons why these pipes could have failed. You can have corrosive soils, you can have water hammering effects from closing hydrants too fast that can weaken the joints. It could be an installation issue that, like you've seen on Reed Street, where when the contractor installed the pipe, there just wasn't adequate supervision, that there wasn't, you know, good backfill put in the trench. Anything like that could cause this main failure, whether it's installed in 1950 or 1990. So, we can look at that during construction.
So, Matt, here's my thinking. We have pipes in this neighborhood that were installed in the 1800s, and they're wood, and they're still functioning just fine. We have a section on Steer Street that was installed in 1950 and 1990 that is a mess. When you are digging and replacing the pipe, is there a engineering capability on the site in real time to develop evidence that can prevent the same thing from happening with the new installation?
So, we could actually do soils testing ahead of time to determine if the soils are corroded. If they are, then we do have methods where you can wrap the pipe in basically a polyethylene encasement. It's basically, you're putting it in a plastic bag to protect the pipe. And also, part of the contract with Tater and Howard, should you guys approve the funding for both engineering and construction, would be full-time resident observation. So, you would have an engineer, you know, on the ground, watching the pipe go in, making sure that they're excavating to a certain depth, installing the pipe correctly, backfilling correctly, that they're not putting any boulders on top of the pipe. So, that will help prolong the life of this new main that would go in.
So, given that there's been an increase in technology since the 1950s and less so since the 1990s, has the technology of water pipe installation advanced very much since 1990?
More so the polyethylene encasement that I was talking about. Ductile iron pipe has been around probably since the late 70s, early 80s. That doesn't necessarily mean that what's out there is ductile iron, but we have seen case studies mainly through DIPRA, which is Ductile Iron Pipe Research Association, where they have put ductile iron pipe in corrosive soils, and within a few years, it can be compromised. So, wrapping a ductile iron pipe with polyethylene would protect that ductile iron pipe from the corrosive soils.
So, is ductile iron the only available material of choice for water installations?
Not necessarily, but I would say probably 90 to 95% of water mains would be replaced with ductile iron. There are other options that we could consider.
So, Matt, the engineer that's going to be on site, he's going to be sort of a project owner's project manager?
Yes, so any engineer from Tater and Howard on site would essentially be a representative of Tater and Howard, you know, being the eyes and the ears for the city. So, they would be there daily, taking pictures, field notes, and making sure that the contractor is doing what he's supposed to do according to the contract documents.
As a result of accepting this assignment for the City of Attleboro, has your engineering firm taken on any liability on the life of this installation?
That, I don't know if I could really speak to that as far as liability on Tater and Howard, but I mean, part of our contract is for Tater and Howard to do our due diligence as far as researching soil types, you know, the best type of material to use, you know, protecting the city's best interest.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other question? Counselor Dolan?
So, will you be doing soil testing to determine if we need the polyethylene encasement or not?
Can you repeat that? I didn't quite hear you.
Will you be doing the soil testing? Because you said the encasement protects it from the corrosion from the soil. So, will you be doing testing, or do you intend on putting that encasement on regardless?
Yes, so part of what we could do is do soil borings every 300 to 500 feet along the length of the water main, and in those soil borings, we could take samples, send them to a lab, and they would do an analysis to determine what, essentially, what the pH and a number of other parameters are of the soil to determine if they are corrosive.
So, will that determine whether or not the encasement is installed?
Correct. If it's corrosive, we would install either a polyethylene encasement or recommend potentially a PVC water main.
And what's the turn... That sounds like it's a long process. Is the turnaround on...
The turnaround is... The turnaround would still fall within our design timeframe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Delicio?
Thank you. Matthew, thank you for coming out tonight. So, I heard Courtney talk about there's a list, and Steer Street was pretty high on that list. Counselor Conti asked a lot of pretty in-depth questions. My question is, especially where you said you're familiar with the city, and you're familiar with... You've done... Your company, you know, has done projects with the city. Do we have any mechanism in place to forecast, prioritize? Because, you know, I'm just looking at what we're voting out of Richard's committee this week, and it's $2.2 million for water-related projects as it relates to leaks. So, you know, to the point that we do have still wooden pipes, we have an aging infrastructure. Is there a way that throughout, even if it's piggybacking on Counselor Dolan's question, the soil, anything that might lead us to prioritizing so we can plan a little bit better as best we can for these types of situations?
Sure. So, I believe the... And I'm not a capital efficiency plan person. I'm a water main person and a construction person. The way that the CEP is written is that prioritizes which mains should be replaced first. And again, it's based off of what a main material type, it's based off of installation year, it's based off of customers. Obviously, Roy Ave, which I believe we're going to be speaking about later, is a priority. It's right next to an elementary school. Same thing for any other transmission main that could be serving, a hospital, any other type of school, or what we would call a critical customer. I believe the CEP lays that out pretty well. I also believe the city has a master plan that also prioritizes what they believe should be, you know, the number one, the number two, the number two thing, the number three thing they should put their money towards. So, you know, anything as far as prioritizing, I would probably lean towards that CEP that my colleagues put together as far as, you know, to answer your question.
Is it possible to get a copy of the CEP?
Absolutely.
Yeah? Great. Thank you.
Counselor Jackson?
Thank you. Matt, how long do you expect this project to take from start to finish, once we start digging it up?
Steer Street, excuse me. I believe the timeline we gave Courtney was approximately 96 construction days. So, that would be anywhere from three... About three months to get the main in operation, and probably about four months to finish things up, like lumen seed, maybe some paving. But we would anticipate about three months for substantial completion.
So, would construction plans begin once everything's completed and we're ready to begin construction? So, you're looking at next spring?
Next spring would likely be ideal for you to be able to get the survey done before winter, get the design completed, and put it out to bid for January or February. That's when you're going to get your best bid price, as most contractors are lining up their work for the following year.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Great, thank you. Any other additional questions for Courtney?
I have just one, just one. I seem to remember when they installed the 1990 section on Steer Street, but do you currently know what the range and depth of the pipe is from the surface of the road? I know it varies.
I'm not entirely sure of what it is now, but typical water main installation is about five feet below the surface. That could fluctuate based on a number of things, drainage, ledge. I'm not sure what Courtney's crews have found during repairs, but...
So, Matt, is part of your scope of work to look at the construction documentation from when those lines were put in? So, I seem to recall that in 1990, there was a lot of ledge that had to be blasted and removed, which shouldn't be a problem in reinstalling the lines, but I also remember 14-foot-plus depth on trenches, which was sizable. So, do we know yet whether or not those construction documents from the 50s and the 90s are available to you?
That's something where we would have to request those documents from both the Water and the Sewer Department. 14 feet sounds more like a sewer installation.
Go to Ben.
But as part of replacing the water main, we would recommend the use of temporary bypass piping, which I'm sure you've seen above the ground. That allows us to shut down the existing water main, provide temporary water, and then the existing water main comes out, and the new main goes back in the exact same place.
So, Steer Street will not be needing to invest in bottled water. There'll be a new line put right across the driveway with little curves to keep it from getting crushed, and they should have a steady supply of water with minor interruptions.
Correct. It's fully disinfected, and it's potable water.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any... Counselor Blair?
Does a contingency on that main include a willow cover, that plastic lining over the pipe?
Are you talking about as part of the 1.7?
Yeah.
That should be able to be accommodated. It's a relatively inexpensive... In the grand scheme of construction, it's a relatively inexpensive item.
You're not going to be... We're not going to be hit with a, you know, a third, a double?
I would not like to come back to ask you for more money.
Bringing a gun.
Any other questions? Counselor Holmes?
Thank you. So, just off of what Counselor Conti was saying, I think what we're hoping for is some sort of investigation of what potentially could have happened. So, it sounds like you would naturally do that, or is that something that has to be...
We can definitely make that a priority as part of our field work during construction.
I'm concerned something's off here, and we just want to figure this out. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions for either Matt or Courtney at this time? Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak? Anyone else here to speak in favor? Anyone else here to speak in favor? Anyone to speak in opposition? Anyone to speak in opposition? Anyone to speak neither for nor against? Anyone neither for nor against? Seeing none, Counselor Conti, do you see any reason to keep this public hearing open?
I do not. I wish to have it closed.
Great, this public hearing is closed. Moving on to the next public hearing this evening.
Yes, next public hearing is relative to the following loan order for water main work on Roy Avenue, which is a $500,000 budget.
Great, thank you. Again, Courtney and Matt, if you want to come on up and speak in favor.
The CEP that we talked about does not have Roy Ave listed. We actually have no break history for Roy Avenue. The way we found the break that's out there now is annually, as part of a reduction... An attempt to reduce unaccounted fall water. We hire a contractor to go out and do citywide leak detection services throughout the entire distribution system. So, it was May of this year, mid-May, our leak detection contractor found a leak. contractor found a leak on Roy Ave. Um, if you go down the street, there's a culvert that goes over the river. The water main actually goes under the river, actually off of the road, under the river, back up, and then back onto the road over there. Um, the leak was found under the Seven Mile River. Um, and just to get it shut down and to stop leaking into the river, um, we had two insertion valves installed as part of regular budget. So currently it's shut down. Um, the problem, and nobody's without water, um, it's just shut off under the river. The problem with this, actually, there's two problems. Um, one of them is that if, and I did submit maps, if you look, Roy Ave is right here, Hayar leak is right here. Look, this is the Reed Street project that we're going to be doing. The only other loop after this one with this shut off is way down here on County Street and through Bristol Place Plaza. Um, so basically, we took a nice loop and we made it into a dead-end main. Um, it basically cut available fire flow to the school that's on Roy Ave almost in half. Um, and as well as that, um, Roy Ave, the loop back there was intended to be used as part of the back feed, the temporary water service to Reed Street, when Reed Street's under construction. Um, so it, it is a necessary project for actually both those reasons.
Council Delicio?
When we, um, when we met to, um, investigate the issues that surround this project, um, we talked about whether or not, um, Nick Wiley would be playing a role in this project as it was right next to, I suppose, as it is in a river. Have you been able to speak to Nick and?
Um, I've spoken to Nick. Um, he didn't have a definite answer when I spoke to him, but it was most likely no. Um, the intended plan for this, like I said, the current water main goes underneath the Seven Mile River, and our intent is to install the new main back under the river. Um, it's less costly by a lot. Um, and in addition to that, it's le, believe it or not, it's less disruptive to the river. Um, what Tater and Howard has actually proposed is a directional drill. Um, and I actually gave you a quick schematic of that in the package, too.
You did.
Um, so they basically excavate, uh, access pit out of the area of the wetlands, and they'll bore a hole from access pit to access pit under the river and pull the main, new main, pull or push the new main through. Um, so it actually doesn't enter the wetlands. It goes completely under.
So Courtney, you have a very large contingency budget on this project. It's as big as the project. Would you care to?
Just about.
Discuss that with us, please?
Um, yeah, there's a couple of reasons for that. Um, first, we don't have, um, really too great of records of where the main is. Um, we have location, we could actually see it. Um, when it was first shut down, we could see where it threw sand into the river. You could see a definite line of where the main is. Um, the depth, we're not 100% sure. Um, the soil condition, we're not sure if it's ledge, we're not sure if it's sand, we're not sure if, how long this leak was actually going before the contractor found it. Um, so we're not sure if we're going to find a mess under there, if we're going to find a sinkhole. Um, there's, you know, a bunch of things that we can run into. Um, the other reason for a contingency that high, again, is because of the necessity for fire flow to the school and to keep the Reed Street project going and on its timeline. Um, it's, again, it's $500,000. Um, the chances that we're actually going to use the whole thing probably aren't that high, but it's there just in case, um, so that we don't have to come back to council and delay any of this any further.
How long is it going to take for the directional drill? How long is it going to take, how long is the water going to be shut off underneath that bridge?
Um, it is actually shut off. It's going to remain shut off until the new main is installed.
So while that water's shut off, Hill Roberts School is, when we talked about this loop diagram.
Mm-hmm.
This is where the bridge is, this is where Hill Roberts is. We severed that connection, so this is no longer a loop. And the school is now going to be getting its water down from this section rather than from this section. There was an engineering calculation on what the flow was. Do you remember what that was?
There is. Um, the average fire flow in the area, um, with that main on before we shut it off ranged from 2,100 to 24 gallons per minute. Um, when we shut it off, the average in...
Is that 2,100 to 2,400?
Gallons per minute.
Okay.
Okay. Um, with it off, that drops to 700 to 1,000 gallons per minute. Um, with the school specifically, it went from about 2,350 to about 1,500 and 7, 1,570 gallons per minute. So it's a substantial drop.
So what is the likelihood that neighbors will experience with that pressure volume drop?
Um, actually, the pressure remains the same.
Mm-hmm.
Um, with the volume drop, um, it's not a super populated neighborhood, um, it's not a high-flow area, anything like that. Um, so we really haven't heard from any of the neighbors. They're really not noticing much outside of the valves being installed.
And how long do we think construction's going to take?
Um, construction was through...
Uh, construction was approximately 30 days.
Were you able to ask then when that was installed for the list that was, uh, given to you by Linda?
Uh, 1959 to 1960.
1960. No idea at this time what, um, the cause of the leak is.
No.
Will we have an opportunity to discover that during this process?
With a directional drill? Probably not.
So are we going to just leave the pipe that is broken in the ground there?
Yes.
And, um, you said that the estimate for the cost of going over the bridge was much higher. Do you remember what those figures were?
It was. Um, hang on. Um, I actually have it calculated out, um, without the contingency, just to simplify it. Um, without the contingency for the original proposal under the bridge, um, just under $309,000. Um, to go over, we're looking at 432 or higher.
But by going over at 432 or higher, you don't need the contingency, correct?
Um, you still would. Um, you're running into extra permitting. Um, you're running into, you still need to install somewhere to support the pipe. Um, so again, you're still running into what's in the ground that's actually going to, that we're going to be able to stabilize the pipe from.
So was the 432 estimate including the support system for the pipe?
Yes.
Do you want me to speak?
Yes. Yes.
Welcome, Matt.
So the, uh, the estimate, uh, the request of loan amount is 500,000. The estimate for, uh, engineering, which includes design, construction administration, resident observation, again, being, having a representative, uh, supervising construction. Also, uh, the construction cost plus the contingency, we estimated at $335,000. That's soup to nuts, everything directional drilled. The 400-plus thousand was construction only. That did not include...
I'm sorry, what?
The 432,000 that Courtney was talking about to go over the river is construction only. That does not include engineering. And the reason for that is it's hard for us to, uh, put a number on engineering without doing further investigation. Uh, and when I say that, uh, it more has to do not so much with physical investigation of the river or the water main, but researching into Army Corps, Mass DEP. Uh, there are a number of different permits that you need to obtain to go into a wetland, to go into a river. Uh, we're not sure if this river is a navigable waterway, which would fall under Army Corps jurisdiction. Uh, it's a can of worms once you start going into a wetland or into a waterway. And the reason we recommend the directional drill, we've done a number of these projects in the past 10 years where we have directionally drilled beneath a river. Uh, and the, it's a fantastic way to, to do this construction. Uh, the main that gets put in is an HDPE, uh, a high-density polyethylene pipe. It is not ductile iron. So that would resist any type of corrosion or acidic soils. And, um, that essentially would guarantee that your pipes, it's not going to corrode, it's not going to break. Um, it, it's, it's a very innovative technology. There's a number of contractors in the Northeast that we've worked with who do a fantastic job. Um, it's cheaper. There is no adverse effects to the wetlands or the river. Uh, we actually met Nick onsite to talk about Roy Ave. We're also doing the same thing on Reed Street. We're also crossing the Seven Mile River, uh, as part of that project. So we met with Nick onsite, and he was very...
Excuse me. Are you, are you directional drilling on Reed Street as well?
Yes. Yes, we are. Um, so the, the thought there was to just get Nick out there, look at both projects, get his opinion on how we should approach this. And he was much more in favor of directional drilling beneath the river than he was of doing any type of, um, bridge abutment, pile, I-beam, some sort of structure to support a water main, um, above grade. Um, it's not a bridge out there on Roy Ave, so it's not like we could hang some supports off the side of a bridge or install it, um, inside, you know, a utility bay like you would see driving on 95. Um, and there's also no bridge abutments for Roy Ave, so we can't just set, you know, a steel beam on the bridge abutment and run the main over. We'd have to build a completely separate, um, support system for this main. That would include the cost for a geotechnical engineer to do a soil analysis for the bearing capacity of the soils. Can the soils support, you know, new abutments or new piles for this beam to go on? We'd have to get a structural engineer to size the beam. Um, all of that's eliminated if you directional drill. So your engineering costs are less, your construction costs are less, you have less disruption to the resource areas. Um, we would highly recommend that you install this replacement main via directional drill.
So Matt, were you a party of the, uh, were you part of the team that was doing the hydraulic, uh, calculations for the flow?
Um, I had someone assist with those. I, I had them calculate them.
So what is, what is a, um, this is a six-inch main?
I believe it's eight.
So what is the typical volume for an eight-inch main in the city of Attleboro?
Um, that depends on pressure. Uh, it depends on the demands. Um, is it just a residential house? Is it a restaurant?
I'm leading, I'm leading up to a dumb question. Why are we even doing this? We've closed the system off. Everybody's getting water. They're getting 1,500 gallons a minute at the school. Doesn't seem to be causing a problem with the residents. Why are we bothering to repair this pipe?
Uh, this is a critical loop. Uh, it comes in, um, across the bridge. So you're, you're allowing, let's say, for instance, if there was a fire at the school, the water main is now isolated at the bridge. So now you can only get water from Reed Street. That severely compromises your, your firefighting capabilities. You're cutting your available water in half. For a structure the size of the school, the, uh, it, it sounds like a lot of money, half a million dollars, but to invest that money into repairing this, uh, this main under the bridge is going to double the available water for you to fight a fire. Um, it's not so much about, you know, pressure, no one's noticing any changes. Um, but it, it's really a critical loop for your system as far as, um, you know, getting from Reed Street and across the bridge.
So half a million dollars is a lot of money. I would think that we would be able to build a fire pond or a water reserve for less money.
Um, if that is, um, a, a way you want to go, um, you could, but if, from an engineering standpoint, um, repairing that main is, it's, it's a, it's a vital water main for the flow in that area. Again, flow, flow and pressure are two different things. You're not changing the pressure. Um, the amount of flow that you're getting for these residential houses is, is minimal. Um, but when we look at, you know, an evaluation of your system or the CEP, or what mains should be done first, it's, it comes down to fire flows. How much, how much water can you get to fight a fire? Um, in reality, it could save lives.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other questions for Matt or Courtney at this time? This is Emprica, and then Council Waterman.
Just, and at the, and what is the timeframe for this particular proj, project?
Uh, directional drill at the start of construction to what we would consider substantial completion, when the water main would be back in operating condition, would be about 30 days.
Are you looking to do this in the spring as well, or no?
Um, the design would take some time, as we'd have to get through permitting with Conservation Commission. Um, but even if this drags into November, December, January, directional drilling is something you can do in the winter. Um, so there's no temporary water involved with this, so the, ideally, this would be done by March at the latest so that you can roll right into doing the Reed Street water main.
Just, may I ask one more question? Um, so again, if you could just reiterate, because I'm sure we have lots of parents who have children that go to school in that location, perhaps you could reiterate that there is sufficient water available at this time in the event of an emergency at that school?
And in the event of an emergency, you could always open those valves where the main crosses the river, and your available fire flow then increases.
And it's, they're just shut now because we have a leak?
They're just shut, shut now because there's a leak.
But in the event of an emergency, we could open those up?
Could open them, correct.
And we'd be able to effectively manage, uh, the situation at the school.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Council Waterman. So, we're not just talking about Hill Roberts. We're talking about all the people, all the, all the dwellings on Roy Ave, all the way down to the end at Newport.
Correct. You're talking about fire flows in that entire area.
Right. So they're all affected equally, just as Hill Roberts?
From a fire flow standpoint, yes. That, that is a good point. We're not just talking about the school. We're also talking about the residential structures in that area.
Um, we're talking about at least 10 structures, perhaps? It's not, or is there more there?
There's...
No, I'm talking about just on Roy.
On, just on Roy Ave, that sounds about right. Um, but all...
But does it also, excuse me, does it also affect structures on Newport as well?
Um, I'm not entirely sure where that is, but this main does go cross-country down Samuel Way and Ed Ledger Drive over to Reed Street. So again, that would affect fire flows in that area because you're not getting water coming over from Newport Ave. You're only getting water down Reed Street. Um, but Newport Ave shouldn't be affected from a fire flow standpoint, because that's a, a major transmission main. So you have adequate flows on Newport Ave.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Council Colby, that's a good question.
Sure. First and foremost, thank you for this information. This was, this was great. It was great to, to get this information, and I, I think it helped us with making our decision. So thank you very much for this. Um, my only question was, and forgive me if you already mentioned this, will the, the repair on Roy Ave affect the schedule for the Reed Street repairs?
Uh, the repair on Roy Ave is necessary for Reed Street for the temporary water. Um, if the, uh, if the project is funded, you could have the design occur this fall, bid it during, bid it and construct it during the winter, and it should be online by March, April, which most, most times, we don't start projects before April 1st anyway when it comes to water, due, due to the weather. Um, but if, if that timeline is followed, it should be repaired, you know, replaced and back online before Reed Street starts.
Okay. That makes sense. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor? Do you want, anyone here to speak in opposition? Anyone here to speak in opposition? Anyone neither for nor against? Anybody here neither for nor against? Council Conti, do you see any reason to keep this public hearing open?
I do not, and I wish to have it closed.
Great. This public hearing is also closed. Uh, at this time, we'll go on to the reading of the next, um, continued public hearing.
Okay. The next is a continued public hearing relative to the proposed amendment to the revised ordinances of the city of Attleboro, section 10 dash 4.18, permanent speed hump slash speed cushions, and this is continued from July 18th, 2019.
Great. Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak? Is there anyone here to speak in favor?
Yes, Mr. President, members of council, Jack Jacoby, Fifteen Prince Street. I am the vice chair of the School Building Committee. I was not able to be here last month at your original. I did send you a letter with a proposed ordinance. And so just to review, the, when you approved the new north-south connector to reconnect Rathman Willard Drive, we pledged to you that we would put four speed tables in and the engineers asked me if it was appropriate to start designing that and to bring this before the council. I then looked at our ordinance book and found that we only had a temporary measure, not a permanent measure. I looked further at Chapter ninety, Section eighteen, and it's my opinion that we need a permanent measure if we're going to have permanent measures. Then I next spoke with the mayor and I spoke with Virginia and found that he had submitted a proposal to you that was in committee. I looked at it and I thought that it could use a little rewrite, and so I did. And that's what I submitted to you last month. And then through Councilor Empreka, I was asked to go and meet a week or so ago with the Traffic Study Commission, and they had some suggested changes to what I had written. And so that's what I passed out to all of you. Let me say that one change that I think is probably good is in Section four, point eighteen, point three, point one petition. I originally tried to make it difficult for people to do this, thinking you didn't want a whole lot of these in the city, and required them to submit the engineering plan and profile. And the Traffic Study Commission felt, and I think they're right, that simply a plan or sketch showing what it is that's proposed, whether it's a hump or a bump or a table, and where it would be located would be enough to get it started. So then, you know, the engineering work to design it would probably have to be done by Public Works. And obviously, Public Works would have to spend the money to construct it, except for the four that we pledged to you for the school. Those are in the budget for the school. And what I tried to do here was to call for a public hearing and a notification to neighbors because I might like to have a speed hump of some sort on my street, but I might want it in front of my neighbor's house, not in front of mine. And so I think you'll have to deal with that issue if you adopt such an ordinance. The Traffic Study Commission was concerned because I had provided for a fifteen mile an hour speed limit. They thought that these could be designed so that eighty percent of the otherwise posted speed limit would be appropriate, and that appears in two places here. I think that there's perhaps a difference of opinion, that some people think that it should be fifteen miles an hour, some people may think it should be at eighty percent. All I want to do is see you adopt something so I can deliver on what we promised you, which is the four speed tables. So if this version that the Traffic Study Commission is what you like, that's great. If my original version with the, making it a little easier to file the petition is what you like, or if there's some third version that you come up with, that's fine as well. I would just like to see the city adopt something so that we can do what we pledged to you. And then if various neighborhoods want to come before you and suggest something, then it will be in your discretion as to what's appropriate. And I'm sure you will go through the usual steps. You will talk to Public Works, you will talk to the police chief, you'll talk to the Traffic Study Commission, and after a public hearing, you'll decide whether it's good, bad, or indifferent. So that's what I'm asking for tonight is for you to adopt the enabling legislation.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Jacoby at this time?
Thank you. Thank you so much. I feel like you've, you've done a lot for the city. The letter was, you just really look over everything really well and I appreciate that. I have a question though. You included the municipal council in this, but the temporary one states that the traffic enforcement chief, which I really don't know who that would be, the direction of the, the chief of traffic enforcement would be the one that individuals would be going to to make a request for that, for the temporary ones. So I'm wondering why you think the municipal council should be the body to, to hear this? Or for the request to come to us and not the administration, I guess?
I think that the police chief, is what you're referring to, has temporary speed humps that the city has purchased and that have been installed in various places for various periods of time, and there is a limit on that. But I think that if it's going to be a permanent matter in the public way that affects everyone who uses that street, not just for thirty days or sixty days, that it's appropriate for you to decide if that's what should be in our public way. And so that's my thought. If you, in your judgment, think that the police chief should decide whether these things are going to be constructed or not, that's certainly your choice. But I do think that from Mike Tyler's viewpoint, and he was at the Traffic Study Commission and he expressed the opinion that somebody's going to have to pay for a design and somebody's going to have to pay for the construction. And my conversation with the mayor, he said, well, in his opinion, if the council was to adopt a neighborhood petition to do one of these, he'd probably have to send some money down to you to have, might be able to pay for the design and the construction. So I do want you to understand that apart from the four for the school, if you do this for a neighborhood because they've asked for it, then there's probably going to have to be an expense by the city, free cash or a reserve fund for transfers that would pay for this. But I guess just my feeling in answer to your question that if it's permanent, that you as the legislative body should be the ones to exercise the control and the discretion.
I am.
Sure.
Thank you. So one of the things I'm requesting, and I think that there's only one or two streets that have temporary ones, so this is not talking about the high school project, there's only one or two streets that have temporary speed humps. And I'm concerned that we're making something permanent when it's not like we have a list of twenty temporary ones and we're hearing that ten, ten streets would like to have permanent ones. Like, I'm not, I'm confused what the issue is really. It's not like we have twenty temporary ones and we have a million people requesting permanent ones. So besides the high school project, what are your thoughts on that?
So first of all, but in order to do the high school project, we'd have to have enabling legislation. Now, just as an example, I happened to be sitting at a planning board meeting last month waiting for my turn when the development at, through Rambler out Pike, and they were talking about establishing a speed table as part of the developers' work in extending the roadway out there. And it struck me that if the city's going to accept that as a public way, then you would need to have some enabling legislation. When it's a private way, that's fine, but when you would be accepting it as a public way, if in fact the planning board requires that, then it would, this would allow that.
All right, thank you.
And then, please, President Empreka?
So again, similar to Councilor Holmes, I couldn't appreciate more the information that you have provided, and you've put the language that came into the municipal council into an actual ordinance form. We, the Traffic Study Commission, spent several meetings, kind of scratching our heads trying to pull it together and make it be this, and you came in like a white knight and said, here you go, and had it all done. We did have, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
I also, so I think it's, if you could maybe share a little bit of your conversation that you had with Mr. Aragio as to why, just kind of highlight a little bit more about why we need this ordinance as it pertains to currently accepted roadways as opposed to ones that are still private roadways.
Okay. Chapter ninety, Section eighteen, the way I read it, and I believe the city solicitor does too, at least the mayor told me that, says that if you're going to put something permanent, like a speed table or a hump or a bump, in the public-
Or stop sign, or, you mean a stop sign or something like that as well?
Yeah. Telephone poles in the public way, you have to approve all of those things. In fact, you're going to get some read into the record tonight and have a public hearing for some poles we need to move to facilitate the high school. All of those things in the public way require action by this council. And so it may be that speed tables become something that the planning board decides to require in residential, new residential neighborhoods to slow traffic down is, I don't know. But I know they're actively discussing that, for that one particular development. So I think this can serve a purpose, but I also think that, yeah, are we going to have ten or twenty or thirty of these around the city? I suspect not. And I suspect it could be controversial in some neighborhoods, especially, as I said, whoever's house it's in front of, especially where there's, might be some truck traffic and a lot of rumbling and bumbling and noise that goes on. So, but you guys get elected to make the tough decisions, so we'll leave that to you.
Thanks, Jeff.
And just very quickly, and so is, would that be the reason with the, with the potential contentiousness that you also included the, the same process by which you have them installed to have them removed?
Oh, yes. I just guessed that there might be something installed, and three or four or five years later, people say what a terrible idea this was. And I wouldn't want the city then to be stuck with that and have no way. So I also put in here that somebody could petition you to take it out if it turned out to be a bad idea. And then I wrestled a little bit with what the standard should be, and I thought that in the end, simply saying that it has to be in the public interest is, whether to put it in or take it out would be the standard that you would use. I really couldn't think of another defined standard.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Jacoby?
Okay, thank you. And I'll see you all on Thursday at Councilor Conti's committee to talk about the repairs to the library and where we might be going from here on that.
Great. Looking forward to it. Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor? Anyone here to speak in opposition?
Good evening, councils. My name's Roger Blank, and I seem to be standing before you discussing what appears to be potentially another lack of enforcement issue. Now, notwithstanding Mr. Jacoby's comments aside, the way I read the, the proposed ordinance, it relates more to adding in permanent traffic calming measures to existing roadways, not to newly constructed roadways as we have at the, the high school where there is a civil engineer involved doing traffic studies and traffic planning. This, to me, is more for people who are complaining that there is a problem with speeding in their neighborhood. And as Councilwoman Holmes said, there are a couple of locations where we have temporary, excuse me, temporary traffic tables, but there's not a rash of them. So really, why do we need this new legislation to, to be able to do this? From my understanding, there's nothing stopping someone coming before the traffic committee and requesting one now. I happen to live on a dead-end street. If I think there's a problem with speeding, I don't think that there's anything that would prevent me from coming and requesting some form of traffic calming measure, whether it's a stop sign or a speed table or what have you. It's also very important to realize that anytime you make a change to, to an existing roadway or public right-of-way, it has the potential to have a dramatic impact on the people that travel that. Who, who's really going to determine the suitability and the applicability of where that speed table should go? A sketch by my neighbor who puts the speed table in front of my house instead of his, as Mr. Jacoby said, may work well for him, but in terms of the actual traffic flow of the neighborhood, who is he unless he's actually a traffic engineer, the person to decide that? That's why there are traffic engineers and civil engineers, and I'm not sure putting a petition forward to the municipal council is really the right way to do that. In fact, according to the Mass Highway Department's Project Development and Design Guide, two thousand and six, which is the current version, they actually state, and I quote in Section sixteen point nine, administering a traffic calming program, requiring petitions from residents, businesses, or property owners as a prerequisite, excuse me, prerequisite for installing traffic calming measures is inadvisable. These petitions are expensive, both in terms of funding and managerial attention required by the traffic calming program. Further, the petition process is often divisive, with the outcome likely to vary greatly depending on the wording of the petition and the outlook of the person collecting the signatures. Basically, what they're saying is, is the person who, that one person on a street of thirty houses who thinks there's a speeding problem is not the person who should be deciding and petitioning. There is a whole gamut of design guidelines from Mass Highway that determines whether or not a speed table, a speed hump, or anything else is applicable. This ordinance doesn't really address that. On top of all that, there, I think there will be a significant cost to the city. Let's be honest, as a city council, you'll have a lot better things to do with your time than sit here with people coming up constantly for speed tables. It's not just that. If the DPW can't do it, now we have to get purchasing involved because you have to bid it out to a subcontractor or to a contractor. You have to get the DPW involved with permitting. There's signage that needs to be done. You can't just put a speed hump in there in somebody's street and walk away and go, we solved the problem. There are going to be unintended consequences. There is actually proof, or it's, in, excuse me, in the same Mass Highway design guidelines, you have to also consider that there could be a decrease in emergency vehicle response time because they have to slow down for that speed table you put in. If there's more than one on a street, that could compound, police, fire, rescue, what have you. In terms, the high school project aside, I understand, you know, there's, you know, there are traffic studies, there are safety concerns with kids walking back and forth. This isn't, my comments really aren't about that. It's about the people in neighborhoods coming forward and requesting one of these. The Attleboro Police Department's motto is, no call too small. I happened to stumble across last year's annual report from, from the police department. Somewhere around two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, the number of traffic enforcement stops dropped dramatically. The mayor's own comments have said that speeding is one of the biggest complaints he hears constantly from residents of Attleboro. If it is that big of a concern to the residents of Attleboro, why doesn't the police department put more emphasis on traffic enforcement, in traffic enforcement, excuse me? In the year two thousand seventeen, according to the appendix in the two thousand eighteen police, police annual report, there were three calls for traffic enforcement. Three! That was it. Two thousand eighteen had twenty-eight. If traffic and speeding is such a big problem in the city, should there be more emphasis on traffic enforcement and cutting down on speeders? Now, I'll be the first, got to tell you, I have the utmost respect for the police department, the fire department, our first responders. I don't know why the numbers are this way, so just to, to round out the numbers, in two thousand, in two thousand thirteen, let me try and match up the columns, excuse me, two thousand and twelve, there were four hundred and forty-three traffic involved, traffic enforcement stops. In two thousand fourteen, it dropped to seventy-six. In two thousand fifteen, it dropped to- In 2015, it dropped to sixteen. Now, I'm not exactly sure how the police department is classifying these. They could have classified traffic enforcement, traffic stops in another category. There are separate line items from motor vehicle stops and traffic control and things like that. But again, if no call is really not too small, or not too small, then if this is such a big issue with the city, then why don't we just have the police department write tickets? Why do we have to take up the city council's time, the DPW's time, the purchasing department's time to install speed humps that could be all over the city because one person on a street of thirty, forty, fifty thinks there's a speeding problem?
Any questions for Mr. Blank at this time?
Thank you, President Cooper. Enforcement aside, where it was, it's clear that we do need to have an ordinance as it pertains to an established roadway, especially where, with the high school build, would restricting it to non-resident, restricting this particular ordinance to non-residential areas kind of, would that be satisfactory?
It would, but I don't know if that would achieve the results that the mayor and the people who are pushing for it are really looking for. It seems to be more residential streets. Let's use May Street for an example, where the temporary ones are now, right? May Street has a thirty mile an hour speed limit on it. That's, to me, in my unprofessional opinion, is pretty high for a short street. Now, does the person on May Street who thinks there's a speeding problem there, who's standing in their yard stationary, watching the truck go by at thirty miles an hour, think it's speeding? I think any reasonable person standing stationary, watching a box truck go by at thirty miles an hour, would go, wow, that thing's moving. You know, in non-residential areas, I would be okay with that, but again, I don't know if that would solve what the intent of the ordinance was, high school project aside.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Roger, thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition?
Can we just ask if you could submit any information to him?
Oh. Do you do me a favor and submit anything you have? If you have those guidelines electronically, if not, just the link to them to Virginia before you go? That would be great. Thank you. Is there anyone here, anyone else here to speak in opposition? Anyone here to speak neither for nor against? Anyone here to speak neither for nor against? Council Holmes, do you see any reason to keep this public hearing open?
I do not.
That public hearing is also closed at this time. Moving on to the last and final continued public hearing this evening.
Yep, it's continued public hearing relative to the request of the council that the council declares surplus and available to disposition, the Old Richardson School at ninety-five Hunch.
Thank you. Is it, anyone here to speak in favor? Is there anyone here to speak in favor? Anyone here to speak in opposition? Anyone here to speak in opposition? Anyone neither for nor against? Anybody here neither for nor against?
Good evening. Back. So, at the last meeting of the council of this public hearing, oh, sorry, Lisa Nelson for Williamsburg Lane.
Yeah, so really what we asked for was sort of an up, at this meeting, was for you to come back and provide an update to the council on what you have been able to get to. Just so the council's aware, I thought that we would likely be closing this public hearing. I did speak to Council Reynolds, who also went on a site visit with Councilor.
Perica.
Perica. At the last one that you had scheduled, she thought that she had the information at this point that she needed and would invite anyone back to the committee meeting, that if she had outstanding questions or the council had any outstanding questions at that time. In the meantime, someone in between my call to Sarah and my discussion with Virginia, someone from the public came forward inquiring about the Richardson School, the potential for us to declare it available. And so for that reason, we're going to keep it. We will keep this public hearing open this evening, but Ms. Nelson was here tonight, so I wanted to give her the opportunity to give us the update that we asked for and the reason why we continued it for as long as we did. Once Council Reynolds is back and we give the opportunity to sort of go through this again in a couple of weeks, we will then likely close the public hearing. But I just wanted you all to know what that update and plan was. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome. So at the last public hearing, it was our understanding that you had asked some specific questions of community development for Attleboro Inc. to clarify some of the slides that they had presented and where they'd gotten their information from. I don't see that there's anybody here to explain that to you, but what I would like to say is that we're here to give you an update of what we have done in the meantime. So there are three things that we actually addressed, and we, as I'm talking about it, are the tenants of the building who are very interested in keeping the services there. So one of, the first one, and the most important one, I think, for you to consider is the state of the building, the condition of the building. So over the past month, two months, we have had three professional developers come through the building just to take tours at various times, not all together, but individually, just to take a look at it. And as you can well imagine, and as Council Perica knows, because we really appreciate that she came to the tour of the building along with Council Reynolds, is that there are significant items of deferred maintenance in the building. But each one of the professionals that walked through said that although there are items of deferred maintenance, the bones of the building are good, and that it's rehabable, and that they saw that as a positive step, that there are things that can be done to make the building inhabitable, which would be just great. We've also been invited by one of the developers to tour two former municipal buildings in the area that he had rehabbed and has repurposed successfully. So we're looking forward to doing that. We just haven't been able to get that scheduled with vacations. The second thing that we looked into, which was also a request on your part, were funding options, revenue options for the building. So given that twenty-five percent of the building is currently vacant, and with at least half of that space immediately available for rent, we feel that there are some opportunities to get those leased up now. And the other two, with some additional work, could be leased up soon. So that would bring in additional revenue. In talking to the tenants currently in the building, there's overwhelming, they are overwhelmingly confirming to us that they want to stay in the building. So we have no doubt that the current tenants are vested and will stay there with us. Since June, we've identified sixteen potential sources of grants and loans. A lot of it depends on who owns the building, what's happening with the building, is it a nonprofit, is it municipal, or whatever? So it's very difficult to kind of zero in on those until we know what's going to happen to it. And we've also been advised that if we decide to put in some collaborative workspace in the building, that we would be eligible for a sizable grant from Mass Development. So we're looking into that as well. And then the third thing we looked at is value to Attleboro. So I think one of the things that's been bandied about is the idea that we could sell the Old Richardson School to a developer and have that developer turn it into housing, more housing. So if you've been reading the newspaper as I have, you realize that based on some of the decisions that have recently been made in the city, there will be soon two hundred and sixty additional apartment units that will become available in the city of Attleboro. So there's thirty-seven Union Street is fifty-nine apartments proposed, sixty-one Union Street is sixty apartments proposed, ninety-five South Main Street, which is Renaissance South, that's a hundred and thirty-six apartment units, and sixty-seven Mechanic Street is ninety-seven units under construction, and that's over fifty-five. So what I'm wondering is, when do we get to the point where we say we're almost there as far as what we need for the city of Attleboro? What we haven't determined is, we may be almost there for what we need for apartments for the city of Attleboro. I don't think we've determined that we have any other place to put the services that the tenants in this building provide for the city of Attleboro, to keep them together and to keep them functioning in the way that they are. And the idea being that the residents that they serve and the two-point-four million dollars that they bring to the city in additional services and goods cannot be replicated easily. And so we would ask your honorable body to please continue this because we're doing our due diligence to see if we can make this work. And we would like your cooperation, and we would appreciate your consideration of continuing it as well. That's where we stand.
I think, before I recognize Council Conti, I do want to say that the CDA Inc. was invited to come tonight. Through conversation with Sarah, she wanted to be here for their presentation, so she had planned to have them come to a committee meeting if we closed it, but because we're going to be till September third, they could certainly come to give us the update that we asked for during the first portion of the public hearing. So with that said, council, continue to have questions for Snow.
Lisa, during the tour with the developers, they noted functional obsolescence. Was there any discussion?
It was more deferred maintenance and not functional obsolescence. I mean, I suppose you could call it functional obsolescence, but it's just things that need to be done, yeah.
Is there any discussion among any of the developers about what was curable and incurable in the dollar volume that was related to that?
I think CDA is working on actual numbers for that, but we didn't ask them to provide us with actionable numbers. And it would be problematic to just throw out ideas, you know, anything from a quarter of a million to, you know, half a million or whatever, depending on what needed to be done. But they, they didn't bring in their cost estimators to give us that exact estimate. You know, we know that there are things that need to be updated. We need to fix the chair lift so that people would have access to the upper floors. We know that the electrical system needs to be upgraded. There have been upgrades to the electrical system already, so what you would need is someone to come in and actually do an analysis of what needs to be done. The roof was replaced in 2010, but there's a portion of the flat roof that appears to have something lifting there where some of the flashing is lifting or whatever, and water's coming in. So those were some of the things that were identified. The heating system, part of it was replaced a few years ago. There's a new burner on it, but there's obviously other things that need to be done with that as well. So those are the areas that they looked at, but they, we didn't ask them to give us specific estimates. We just wanted them to tell us that we weren't crazy. You know, the idea that there wasn't, that there was nothing that we could do to the building to make it work for what we needed it to do, or that we should give up on it. And that was not their comment to us.
So bottom line was that they felt that the building was curable?
Right.
And that it could continue to function in its current use at a upper financial level with the curable.
Most definitely.
With the curable.
Correct.
Installations.
Correct.
Good, thank you.
Council Jeff?
Thank you. Hi, Lisa.
Hi.
So I still have my little packet here from what you gave us last time. And I was wondering, and you might not know off the top of your head, but maybe you could let Sarah know, how many, because you have on the annual impact, you had individuals served was fourteen thousand six hundred and twenty-six, meals served twenty-five thousand five hundred and eighty-eight, but the total served is forty thousand two hundred and fourteen. How many of those forty thousand people reside in Attleboro?
I'm not sure we can give you an exact estimate of that because we don't ask them if they have.
But don't they have to show proof?
Like, no, not for the soup kitchens or the food pantry. They do for the Hebron Food Pantry, you just have to prove that you have, I don't even think you have to prove that you work anymore.
There's a good majority. It would be ninety, ninety-five percent are Attleboro, South Attleboro residents.
And a lot of them are able to walk to the building. That's the beauty of the building, is the fact that they walk to the building because they don't have transportation. But we don't necessarily keep track of that. I mean, if, we could probably ask for a breakdown from WIC, they would probably know where people came from. We could do that. But like the soup kitchens, the food that we provide, people can come. They can just come. If you're hungry, you just come.
Most of them come on bus. They get their break.
Yeah, to bus. Provides free transportation.
Thank you.
Just, I have a follow-up question to that. Because is it forty thousand visits or is it forty thousand belly buttons? So it's forty thousand different people? Or is it a series?
I think it's forty thousand all-to-get meals.
I think you're actually aggregating two different things. So the fourteen thousand people that are. Tony Foster, Forty-Eight Sandalwood Drive. I think you're actually aggregating two different things. The fourteen thousand people, or whatever the actual number is, those are individual belly buttons. The twenty-five thousand meals that are served are not necessarily separate individuals. So aggregating them to be a forty thousand dollar, forty thousand person served number isn't really the right way to look at it. The twenty-five thousand meals could include some of those fourteen thousand people who are coming to the building for other reasons.
And they may come more often than just once. I mean, hopefully, they will come back if they need more food.
So the number just looks bigger. And you know what I mean? Like.
Well, if you're looking at it through individuals, maybe it looks bigger, but it's still the same amount. It's forty thousand meals that are given out to people who need them.
Thank you.
Yep.
Including children.
Any other questions or comments for the first president?
Thank you, President Cooper. So thank you again for the tour. It was rather educational.
Thanks for coming.
If there are, if my colleagues have the opportunity, would you open your doors to allow them to come?
The doors are always open. You're always welcome to come. We'd love to have you see what goes on there. It's just an amazing, when you walk through, where Saint Vincent de Paul gives out free clothing, you know, it just, those are all volunteers. It's just amazing, so.
It was the middle of the day, and the place was full and busy.
Right, right, very busy, yeah. So may I also ask, if you're inviting CDA to go back to Sarah's committee, would they have any questions for us?
They may.
For the tenant group? Would you let us know?
Yeah, yeah, Sarah will be in touch with you. That was the plan. Sarah was going to be in touch with all the stakeholders.
Great.
To let you know what the next plan, what the next steps would be.
Great, thanks.
Council Dolan?
Hi. Would you be willing for a tour after business hours or a weekend? Because the first tour that I wish I could have been able to attend, but I work like a nine-to-five, which I think.
Yep. We'd have to check with the building superintendent to let.
So the building is open late until six-thirty on Tuesday evenings, otherwise the building closes at five-thirty. So we would have to make arrangements with Dorothy for us to have the building manager allow us back into the building after hours, but we could do that.
Maybe even like a later afternoon on a Tuesday.
Absolutely. Before this meeting, even if you wanted to, that would be fine.
Right, that would be definitely convenient for me.
Yep.
You know?
And just let us know, let somebody know.
Okay, I'll do that. Thank you.
Dorothy know.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks for the update. Anyone else here to speak neither for nor against? Thank you. So this public hearing, as I stated earlier, is going to be open. We'll keep it open till September third. At this time, I entertain a motion to enter committee of the whole.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. At this time, if there's anyone that would like to address the city on any city issue or business, now is the time.
Good evening. Mr. President and councilmembers, Joseph Salata, Seventy-One George Street. This is my mother, Karen Salata. Reason I'm in front of you tonight is because I would like to address the animal control officer and his responsibilities and what his actions are. So before you, I did submit pictures of a dog attack that happened on July thirty-first to my brother. It was not a minor incident, that's why I submitted the photos. So on the evening, my brother was attacked. The dog caught his face, his arm, and his leg pretty severely, as you can see in the photos.
No, no sign of aggression, no nothing, just attacked him out of nowhere.
So he was taken to the hospital, and I did get Attleboro Police to come to the house. And upon his discovery, I guess you could say, he called the animal control officer. The animal control officer then told me that there is nothing he can do as it is a pet and is my responsibility. He could not come quarantine the dog. He could not take the aggressive dog out of the house. I was fearful that the dog was still being aggressive because my mother, my little chihuahua, and my brother are still in the house, and I would have liked to have the dog taken out of the property. I was not looking in any way for any financial help from the city or from the animal control officer. I would have taken care of it, just like I did the next day. But he did inform me that I had to wait until eight o'clock the next day to contact my vet to have the dog either put down or quarantined. So I took it upon myself to call every shelter that's twenty-four hours in the state of Massachusetts and Rhode Island that I could get a hold of, and they all told me that they could not quarantine the dog unless the animal control officer would quarantine it, which in fact he would not. Upon my request or upon the Attleboro PD's request, he would not do it. I even had the lieutenant on duty call him, and he still would not do it. I think this inaction, not just for myself, but for the actual city of Attleboro, needs to change. Because if a child gets bit or if somebody else gets bit, I think they should respond to get the dog out. to get the dog out.
The following day, I called the mayor and he wasn't there, so I left a message with this secretary and told her what happened. I also emailed her pictures of the bite. The mayor called me the following day and told me that he heard I had an aggressive dog that I wanted removed. And I told him, no, it was not just the dog being aggressive, the dog bit. And he said, no, that's not true. And sorry, I called him a liar because I know what I told the secretary and she saw the pictures. So he said he would get back with me and let me know what the guidelines are for animal control. Well, according to Butch, who we spoke with, Butch doesn't have to come out. Seconk, Attleboro, and North Attleboro are the only three where animal control does not have to come out when a dog bites. I said, well, what if the dog mauled all three of us? Then, then what do you do? And he says, it's still your responsibility to take care of the job. I said, well, what is animal control's responsibility? Aren't they supposed to control an animal? And he said, it's pretty much up to you. You need to do, you know, do your job in controlling your dog. And I just told him it was crazy and that's when I made phone calls to a couple of representatives here to try to get the ball rolling so animal control can actually get off their butt, do their job, and take, take control of a dog that just mauled somebody. I mean, he could have went after us. How are we going to control a dog that's mauling? How are we supposed to protect anybody in the neighborhood if we can't protect them ourselves?
So, Mr. President, I have a point of order. The committee of the whole should be used by citizens to present to the council suggestions or comments on, on what they can do in legislation to resolve issues inside the city. It sounds to me like, Mr. President, that this party has approached the mayor, has approached the police department, and that the animal control officer performance is overseen by the health department. So I see this as an administrative issue rather than a council issue.
So on your point of order, I think that the issue has been brought before us through this party. And I think it's appropriate at this time to refer the matter to the Ordinance of Elections and Legislative Matters Committee, who can follow up with the administration on what the appropriate next steps or what the role and responsibility is of animal control so that we all know it, and then report back to this honorable body and to their committee, whatever those findings might be through conversation with the mayor, the police chief, and animal control, that, that committee does as a, as a point of them coming forward and bringing it before the council.
So can I interpret your comments that the discussion in the chamber tonight will be taken into consideration by the ordinance committee, who will make recommendation to the council, any actions that can be taken to resolve the matter?
To, perhaps, but to better understand what is the role and responsibility so that we're all on the same page.
Thank you for the clarification.
And if there is any potential ordinance change that may or may not need to happen as a result of this particular incident.
I understand, thank you.
Thank you. So, so you're probably thinking to yourself, what just went on here?
Another person that we contacted was Mike Cahill, who's the director of animals. And he researched to find out what the guidelines are for Attleboro. And according to him, and he emailed this to Roxanne, who actually ended up sending it to me. It says, the animal control department has the following duties: respond to calls on stray dogs, dog bites, sick wildlife, barking complaints, animal cruelty, assist the police and fire department and other departments as needed. Sounds like PD did ask for assistance and they didn't do their job.
So again, we're gonna, did you have a question, Council Jackson?
No, it's just going to be a point of order.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm gonna clarify that right now. So, but, let me tell you what the, the action of the council will be as a result of you coming tonight. I am going to refer this matter to the Ordinance of Elections and Legislative Matters Committee, and they will review the ordinance, likely review the case, talk to the police chief, the mayor, animal control, and then come back to this council with a, with a recommendation of any course of action that we need to take, whether it's to firm up the ordinance and identify and understand roles and responsibilities in these types of cases.
I don't think you're going to get any help from the mayor because I mentioned that to him, that it needs to be changed. And he planned out, told me, I don't have to change anything.
So, yeah, and, you know, again, we could go back and forth all night long. He said, she said, I don't know, she don't know, it's if, a biff, or what a butter. So that's why we're going to assign it to that committee. Council Holmes is the chair of that committee. And she will go through a process over a period of time and get back to all of us, including yourself. You'll hear it publicly, what the outcome of you coming before the dishonorable body with this information. And thank you for doing that.
You're very welcome.
Council, please.
I did speak with the individuals prior to the meeting this evening, and the packet that he has with him tonight, I did make a copy. And Virginia has a copy of the communications and the photographs. So Virginia does have that, so.
I have the pictures if you would like to see them.
So we'll all get, we'll all get that through the?
He's a mixed breed.
Any other questions or comments? Again, thank you for coming tonight. Thank you for letting us know and we'll, we'll be in touch.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate your help.
Okay, thanks. At this time, I entertain a motion to arise.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving right along. At this time, I entertain a motion for a recess to go into committee meetings.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We're recessed at eight-thirty-one and we will zoning and land use and capital improvements. Anybody else?
Can I cancel? I'm sure I just canceled.
Who's going first?
It doesn't matter. It's eight-thirty. We can start over here.
Public Works is, oh, before I cancel it though. I can't mention what I was going to mention because we haven't read it into the communication yet. I'm going to cancel Public Works this evening. I have no business for you this evening. I will on Thursday.
Great. What else is canceled?
Personnel Human Services has no business this evening. We'll have, we'll have a committee meeting in the next appropriate time.
Traffic and transportation is canceled for this evening.
Public Safety and Emergency Services is canceled. Question appropriations is canceled.
Licenses canceled.
Ordinance Election Legislative Matters Committee is canceled this evening.
Up to you, Councilwoman.
You're up. I'm up. I'd like to call the Capital Improvement City Development Committee, the board at eight-thirty-one. Senior on this committee is Vice Chair Dolan and Member Watteman. Several, several things that we need to discuss tonight, but before I, well, let me just get started with this one. From the document of July 18th, 2019, I entertain a motion to approve the request of the mayor to transfer thirty-five thousand dollars from account 11241-000-5783, Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer to account 15411000-3530101, Council on Aging Professional Services, in order to fund an elderly needs assessment as requested by the Council on Aging for future planning to address the evolving needs and interests of the Attleboro older residents.
Second.
So at the last committee meeting, I told you that I would meet with the Council on Aging Board of Directors and with Madeline McNeely. And I'm sure you all saw the new issue of the Municipal Advocate. I hope you read it because it's a very interesting article that talks about a toolkit. Council Dolan, did you see this issue of the Municipal Advocate?
I don't believe so.
Okay. I will have copies made and circulated to you so that you can?
I didn't see it.
Okay, then you both need to, you both need to read that. In fact, probably all councils will have to get a copy of that, all councils. So in my meeting with Madeline, it took place July 19th, 2019, at the senior center, it was a two and a half hour meeting. And at that meeting, I said that we uncovered several facts, and I'm going to go over those facts with you tonight. At that meeting, it was very clear that they would appreciate an opportunity to talk to you, committee members, one-on-one. And I told them that I would make that available the third week or second week of September on a Thursday night, if you both were available for that meeting. The, the issue is that the Council on Aging Board of Directors recognizes that they, they should be more engaged together with the executive director, with the council. And I believe that the Board of Directors will be motivating seniors to become more active in government as time goes forward. But about this issue, there are, there are three, three very important things that I think we need to take into consideration. One is that at the last meeting in June, with the mayor's communication, our free cash dropped from three hundred twenty-five thousand five hundred eighteen dollars to two hundred thirty-three thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-three cents. That ninety-two thousand one hundred and eighty-two dollar and seventy-seven cent reduction in free cash left us in a position where we have just three, two hundred thirty-three thousand three hundred thirty-five dollars in current free cash amount to last us through the rest of the year. Yes?
Isn't this motion asking for a reserve fund for transfer and not free cash?
No, it's coming out of free cash. So the request for the thirty-five thousand dollars represents fifteen percent of the available free cash for the remaining year.
It says refer, refer the fund for transfer.
Citywide.
And that's the right account number?
Mm-hmm.
Did I miss something?
Please, please.
It is reserve fund for transfer. At the meeting that I had with the, the board, I, I stated that there was an item in the capital improvement plan to have the bricks repointed in, I believe it's the southwest portion of the building. And it was brought up that the ten-ton rooftop air conditioning unit, which is similar to the one that we replaced on the old post office next door, was destined to fail. And that I questioned whether or not spending thirty-five thousand dollars for a study was in order when those two capital improvement issues were at risk. And they basically identified the fact that this professor from the University of Massachusetts, Boston, had come to make a presentation to the board of directors from the Center for Social and Demographic Research on Aging, which is a unit that is new, newly funded at the University of Massachusetts in Boston, and is soliciting funds from various communities. Salem and Falmouth have bought into this program and have funded it. Because Falmouth knows that they need a new senior center and Salem wanted to make sure that they were, had enough planning to, to meet the needs of their aging population. My, my conversation with them, that this timing seemed to be off because next year is the census year, didn't really get much, much, much ground. Because Madeline made the point that she needs demographic figures to be able to apply for grants. And my feeling was that the information that she's going to get on this report is going to be ten years old, where there's a new census next year. If this was delayed one year, that it would be more meaningful for her to have the information off of the new census.
Why, why would this be ten years old?
Because the last census was ten years ago, in 2010. And the information, the demographic analysis that the University of Massachusetts, Boston is using is primarily from the census. This thirty-five thousand dollars is not a grant. This thirty-five thousand dollars is a direct expense to the budget. And it is, in my opinion, something that should be budgeted. We had a long conversation about the executive director, role of the executive director, and the role of the Council on Aging, and the, the quality of the information that they're going to get as a result of expending this thirty-five thousand dollars. I remain very disappointed in the results of the study that was done on the library together with the building commission. I read that library report cover to cover and I gave a D-plus. And members of the Council on Aging agreed with me that the library study was not well done. They felt that the, the need for this study to come from an outside source was important because I think that they questioned the impact of a study that was being developed by the Council on Aging Board of Directors, Board of Directors would have on the administration and future budgeting to meet the needs of the seniors in years coming forward. And looking at the scope of work that is being covered by the thirty-five thousand dollars, I believe they're going to be reviewing a lot of information that's already available to the administration. The senior center keeps usage trends and use in records very carefully at that building. And I think that a profile of the population in Attleboro is readily developed by any qualified intelligent person who's experienced in writing these reports. The University of Massachusetts, Boston, is going to be employing doctoral students from the gerontology department who have experience in conducting needs assessments to write this report, this thirty-five thousand dollar report. And while I see that we should be, and, and our executive director of the Council on Senior Center is, is a very well-paid, six-figure executive director that has the energy, energy of the Energizer Bunny and the determination of a bulldog. And I appreciate that. She's doing her job and that she's doing a very good job. But the scope of work for this thirty-five thousand dollar plan, conducting four one-day interviews with city officials and having three focus groups to, to gain opinions of the elderly in the city, together with a, the data that you can glean from public sources on peer community organizations and how we fit against other communities, fall short of what I would expect from a thirty-five thousand dollar study. Council Holmes and I were talking a few months back about what were the legal aspects that the city of Attleboro might take in legislation through the city council to better assist the senior population in terms of housing and other needs that the aging population is developing in this robust economy. And, and we met and we talked and, and I did a lot of research and came up with several new business proposals which I'm, which I'm holding because I want to do that in conjunction with the ordinance committee. And to me, that potential legislation in the city, and especially an analysis of how that legislation affects the rest of the city, is a very important equation in any study that looks at the aging needs of the aging population. That doing a study of just looking at the peer communities, looking at the aging population, looking at the census information, conducting some interviews inside the city, stands a big risk of being as ineffective a study as the library study, which is exactly what the library study was, that's all.
So are you, do you want me to wait till you're done before I speak and?
Go right ahead. I really wanna know what you're thinking.
Okay, so, I disagree with almost everything. So, I don't even know why we're talking about the library. Like, that is just, you know, listen, we do studies on everything, and, you know, I've only been here a year and a half or so. Sometimes it works out fantastic, and sometimes it doesn't. Clearly, the library one, you know, everybody has their own opinion on that. I don't think that should play into anything that has to do with this. And when you talk about passing legislation for the seniors, which is great, and we all want that, depending on, you know, what the subject is or whatever, and you're talking about doing the analysis for the legislation, like, who's gonna do that analysis? I mean, that's some in-depth analysis that we need, and I don't know anybody, including Madeline, that can do this. I mean, everybody's at capacity with their jobs, everybody. And that includes the city council as far as, you know, full-time jobs, families, and the council. So, you know, not that they would neglect that, you know, especially ordinances, because, you know, Council Holmes works extremely hard, that's not what I'm implying. But I think to imply that, and you said all nice things about Madeline, but to imply that she makes enough money and can do this study, I don't agree with that comment at all. And then as far as the federal census, and it says, I'm very angry with myself, because I have a copy of this that I had all my notes on, and, I'm not sure where that is right this second, but, and it says the federal analysis, the federal census will provide statistical data on seniors in Attleboro, but will not provide any information what seniors need, want, and can afford and continue to live in Attleboro and thrive. So, I, with all due respect, I think you're assuming what this study's going to show, which we don't know, you know, and this could be a huge asset for us. And, you know, as far as budgeting this, I mean, if we're gonna budget something, we should budget a person to work at the Council on Aging and not for this. I mean, this seems to be like a one-time expense to me. I just took some notes, hold on one second. So, the library, I don't think we should, yeah, everybody has a bad taste in their mouth, but this is a completely different assessment that needs to be done by a completely different company. And again, you know, you said nice things about Madeline, but, you know, she may make, I don't know how mu, I don't remember exactly how much she makes, but I don't, I don't think she'd be asking us for this money if she, you know, took extended lunches and left early and had relaxing time. I think she, we all know her dedication to her job. And I'll let you continue until I have other questions.
Well, Consulate, you sound well-informed, and it sounds like you do not need to have a meeting with the Board of Directors in the future to make a decision on that.
No, no, not necessarily. I mean, 'cause there's always information that I might not have.
Are you inclined to want a meeting in September with the Board of Directors on this issue?
I don't know. I mean, I've done a lot of research, I mean, I'm not sure if we would need to call a specific meeting for this. I mean, but I would show up at any meeting that's...
So, you're comfortable taking a vote tonight?
Out of committee?
Yes.
I am.
Okay. So, you're comfortable taking a vote?
No, no, I was looking forward to meeting with the Board of Directors. I've met with Madeline, but I would like to hear what the Board is saying. And I would also add that my understanding is that the scope of what this, and I need to find out more, but my understanding is the scope of this study is vastly larger than the scope of the library study. They came, they left.
And the census as well. I mean, the census is like, do you have a cat, do you have a dog?
Well, the other thing, Consulate Dolan, is that my understanding is that the census, according to what Madeline has told me, doesn't provide all the information that they'd be looking for.
Right, which is exactly what I stated earlier, that it doesn't, it'll give statistical data, but it won't provide any information on what seniors need, what they need in the city of Attleboro.
So, my hope is that the two of us might go to that meeting together and see what we could glean.
So, for that meeting to take place, we need a mo, and I'll make a motion to table this motion at this time. The motion to table it would require a second.
Point of order? Point of order, if it's possible. Just if I, there's one point of information that you have to, that I need to share with you, if you would be so gracious, is to allow that in your committee.
We have a motion on the floor to table. Your information can come into play on the following meeting. Do I have a second on the motion to table?
Right, right at this time.
Okay. Then, let's take a vote, and I'll take your information then.
Oh, thank you. So, there is a timeframe with regards to this? The need, there needs to be a response from Madeline to the...
Consulate, you're not correct. The University of Massachusetts Boston is a trimester system. The Department of Gerontology that I mentioned employs the doctoral students throughout the year.
I'm aware.
And this study does not need to start now. Their deadline is not our problem. Our issue is whether or not the thirty-five thousand dollars should be spent. If it, if we decide to have it spent, there is a process where the University of Massachusetts Boston has to put it through their administrative review, and it will get started mid-year rather than in September.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sure. So, when I met with Madeline and had extensive discussion with regards to this as well, and talked to multiple individuals on the board, I would have to say, I'll take my time now. Consulate Dolan was a hundred percent correct. We shouldn't be comparing the apples and oranges of the library and the elderly needs assessment. And, you know, I wouldn't classify, that you said all nice things about Madeline, you know, mentioning her salary and things like that, she earns every single penny.
Consulate, do you have anything new to add to the committee?
I do. Well, that would be a new piece. The other part of it, too, is that when I spoke with Madeline, she needs to give them notification in the very first week of September that we can participate in the study. She needed this vote prior to the end of August, so by Thursday, so that we can participate at that time. That is what she shared with me. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. So, the motion's in order. I think we're prepared for a vote. You're prepared for a vote?
Would you, would you say the motion again, please?
The motion is to approve the request of the mayor to transfer thirty-five thousand dollars to order a fund on elderly needs assessment as requested by the Council of Aging.
Right, I'll second that motion.
No, sorry, second it.
Okay.
The question was, are you prepared to vote?
I will vote.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Are you not seeking comments from anybody else, any other councils at this time, and you're gonna do that on the full council floor?
We're gonna do that on the full council floor.
So, that's fine?
So, we'll vote it out of committee tonight. All the councils can join in on the conversation on Thursday night, or tonight later, when we have the regular council meeting.
Which is somewhat unique and goes a little bit against your grain, Consul Conti, and that'll conclude my comments at this time.
Everyone will have an opportunity to speak.
Can I ask a question?
Right, but we've never shut it off at the, we very infrequently shut it off at the committee, at the committee level, Consul.
I was just doing it in the interest of time.
So, may I make a suggestion, and that's all it is, suggestion, is that you do table this motion, you clarify with Madeline tomorrow, and on Thursday night, you bring the motion forward, and we bring it out for a full vote, if you need to. If you don't need to, then you still have your meeting, 'cause you still have Thursday night to be able to repeat this whole thing. I hope you don't repeat everything you said, because it was very lengthy.
I agree with you. I agree with you.
What?
Well, a motion table would require a second, from a committee member.
Or you can withdraw the second.
You can withdraw the second.
Or you can withdraw the second.
Withdraw the second.
Very well. Then we shall address it again on Thursday night. That concludes the business that I have to bring forward to the committee this evening.
Consul?
Yes?
Conti, are you planning to do the loan order that we closed the one point seven million?
Yes.
Do you do that out of committee? The five hundred thousand is an emergency preamble that has to come before the full council.
So, they both, they both need to come in front of the council?
Yes, but the first one, the one point seven, needs to come through your committee first. The other one was voted already by the committee. Needed to have a public hearing, so was brought down as an emergency, which we can do before the full council when we get there.
So, I'm confused.
So, we're just doing the one point seven?
Hold on. Let me clarify for you. The one point seven million dollars was a new loan order for Steer Street. That was the subject of tonight's public hearing that was closed tonight.
And I read that into the record.
I believe that you did.
Yes.
You can then now vote that, to vote that before the full council this evening, so that loan order would be complete, and they can start their process forty-eight hours from the signature, the vote. The second five hundred thousand dollar was a, an additional five hundred thousand for, was the five hundred thousand for Roy Avenue?
Yes.
That came down as an emergency preamble, but because it was a loan order, had to have a public hearing, which we had this evening. So, there is no need for you to vote that before your committee tonight, because you're gonna bring it before the full council as an emergency preamble. Vote the preamble, then vote the loan order for five hundred thousand dollars.
Order.
Is that, are you, are we good? I know it was, it was...
It's confusing. So, from the docket of July eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, I'll read a portion of this so you understand what you're voting on. Planning board recommendation required, we have a planning board recommendation, and I entertain a motion to approve the following loan order, that one million seven hundred thousand is appropriate for permitting bidding, construction oversight, and construction costs associated with the replacement of approximately fifty-two hundred linear feet of water main in Steer Street. And I'll waive the rest of the reading, because it's just details. Thank you, Consul Waterman. So, do we have any discussion on the one point seven million dollar loan order? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. From the docket of July eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, I entertain a motion to approve the following law, loan order as an emergency measure.
No, you don't read that one.
No, not as an emergency measure. That five hundred thousand dollars is...
No, excuse me, point of order, Mr. Conti? Consul Cooper just explained to you, you're not doing that at this point.
We're not doing the emergency measure for the committee.
Not at this point.
We'll do it when we come back from recess rec.
Right, we'll do it for the full council.
That's right.
Good, then I don't think I have any further business before the committee this evening. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. All in favor?
Aye.
Committee is adjourned at eight fifty-six. Thank you.
I call the zoning and land use committee to order at eight fifty-seven. My committee is myself, Consul Holmes, Consul Delicio. We have one order of business tonight. From the docket, I'm still here.
Mike's here for you.
Sure. From the docket of June eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, I entertain a motion to approve the rezoning petition from Sterry Street Auto Sales, Inc., four ninety-five Collin Street, Attleboro, Mass., from single residence B and industrial zoning to general business zoning, set premises being Assessor's flat twenty, Assessor's lot number three hundred ninety-nine, being approximately one acre. So, with this item, my intent tonight is to vote it out of committee, and to give everybody a heads-up that this is coming, and then vote it before the full council on Thursday. And I'll share a little bit of information. We received the certificate of vote from the planning board. It reads, we received it this morning, this is to certify that at the planning board meeting held on Monday, August nineteenth, twenty nineteen, the planning board voted in favor, eight ayes, one absence, absent, to recommend that the municipal council approve the petition of Sterry Street Auto Sales, Inc., to rezone property located at four ninety-five Collin Street, more specifically Assessor's flat, lot number three ninety-nine, containing a land area of approximately one acre, a plant number twenty from single residence B and industrial to general business. So, we received that recommendation from the planning board. I think there's, there's a lot to think about with this one, and a fair amount to consider. For me, this is an easy decision one way or another, and I'm not exactly sure where I'm going to land, but I would like to vote it out of committee so that we can have that full discussion in front of the full council on Thursday. Any other comments on this one? Okay. I also have an email from Gary Oragian explaining his presentation to the planning board and summarizing his statements that he presented to the planning board last night that I could share with the full council.
I was just gonna ask if you could send that to Virginia to get out, 'cause it's gonna be hard for them determining where we go with this.
Perfect. Any other comments from anybody? All right, with that said, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All should pass this. That concludes my business for the zoning and land use committee. Move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Zoning and land use committee is adjourned at nine o'clock.
You have copies, Rick?
I do.
Okay.
But before you start, I may get clear on what I'm covering what I'm not. So my, my copy that I have in my hands are...
Is he not going to be the thirty-five?
We'll not do the first one, because that's the thirty-five.
That's right.
We will do the emergency preamble for the five hundred thousand.
Mm-hmm.
We will do the Roy Avenue five hundred thousand dollar bond. And we will do the one point seven million dollar loan order.
That's right. The one, the, but the only one that I have here is for the emergency and the five hundred thousand. I don't have the one point seven. I can just-
Let me make a photo pocket for you. We will all sign it.
I have it.
And you guys can sign it too? But you're going to need a copy to read, so somebody else could-
I have this one here.
Does it have the three?
It doesn't have the three.
Yeah, yeah, perfect. I'm only going to recognize Council on Justice Committee. And then everybody else is already been called for, unless somebody has, um, announcements. Are there any other committees that need to report tonight? I don't think there are.
Do you think you could say something about that, explain?
You don't need to make a copy.
I don't. I know.
I'm handling it. Oh, good golly.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
If it was only the first time, I heard that today.
So this, uh, one point seven million is going to be a roll call vote.
Yep.
Okay. Could have somebody. And then it's, uh, it's, it's going to be fine, but I- Okay, here we go. Call the council back to order at nine oh seven. At this time, we will read the, um, mayor's communication.
August twentieth, twenty nineteen, dear municipal councillors, I respectfully submit a communication from Superintendent of Schools David Sawyer regarding the donation of four new blackboards and rims with an estimated value of five thousand dollars for Hyman Fine and Hill Roberts Schools and one hundred to two hundred new basketballs with an approximate value of three thousand dollars to be donated to each school for gym and recreational use from the Attleboro Youth Basketball Association. In accordance with section one dash twelve of the revised ordinances of the City of Attleboro, I hereby request your honorable body to accept this generous donation to the City of Attleboro. Copies in your packets.
City Property and Claims Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Superintendent of Park and Forestry Derek Corskey regarding paying eight previous year's bills totaling six hundred twenty-nine dollars and fifty-four cents to W. B. Mason. A vote authorizing payment is needed to satisfy this debt. There is no transfer of funds needed to pay these bills as there is sufficient funding in Fund twenty-six oh seven. Copies in your packets.
Fudge and Appropriations Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Chief of Police Kyle P. Hegney regarding the anticipated receipt of fiscal year twenty, twenty twenty nine-one-one training grant from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, or EOPSS, dash State nine-one-one Department in the amount of approximately two hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty-nine cents. Money from this grant must be expended no later than June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Please note that there is no matching requirement. In accordance with chapter one, section twelve of the revised ordinances of the City of Attleboro, I hereby request your honorable body approve expending of such funds and any future grant amendments. Copies in your packets.
Public Safety Emergency Management Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Chief of Police Kyle P. Hegney regarding the need to transfer funds to pay a fiscal year nineteen invoice to A. Chapontier Power Systems, Inc., in the amount of one hundred ninety-eight dollars. A fiscal year nineteen invoice to Sturdy Memorial Hospital in the amount of six hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety-five cents. And a fiscal year nineteen invoice to Direct Decision Institute, Inc., in the amount of nine hundred dollars. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body transfer one thousand seven hundred and forty-one dollars and ninety-five cents to account police bills from previous year from the following. Hundred ninety-eight dollars from account police maintenance of equipment. One thousand five hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety-five cents from account police medical consultation. Copies in your packets.
Fudge and Appropriations Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Building Commissioner William McDonough regarding the need to pay for services rendered by the plumbing inspector for fiscal year nineteen. A vote authorizing payment is needed to satisfy this debt. There's no transfer of funds needed for these services as there is sufficient funding in the revolving fund. Copies in your packets.
Personnel and Human Services Committee, please.
As you are aware, your honorable body voted to create a disability commission and to disband the council on disabilities. As such, the members on the council of disabilities are required to be appointed to the disability commission. Therefore, I respectfully submit for confirmation by your honorable body the following appointments to the disability commission. Mary Jane M. Jensen, term expires February twenty twenty-one. Jennifer Davies, term expires February twenty twenty-one. Susan J. Jensen, February twenty twenty. Kevin Lacoste, February twenty twenty-two. Cynthia Van Vors, February twenty twenty-two. William McDonough, February twenty twenty-two.
Personnel and Human Services Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Superintendent of Public Works Michael Tyler regarding the need for funds to have state mandated, mandated inspections done at the Farmers Pond Dam, Simmons Pond Dam, and Mechanics Dam. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body transfer fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars from account Citywide Reserve Fund for transfer to account Public Works Professional Services. On approval, the available balance in the reserve fund for transfer will be three hundred and ten thousand, eighteen dollars. Copies in your packets.
Public Works Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Chief of Police Kyle P. Hegney regarding the need to pay a fiscal year nineteen invoice in the amount of six thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty cents for the emergency vendor response and mitigation efforts for the flooding incident at the police station. A vote authorizing payment is needed to satisfy this debt. There is no transfer of funds needed to pay this bill as there is sufficient funding in account continuation appropriate, continuation appropriation of police building renovations. Copies in your packets.
Public Safety.
For your information, I regret to inform your honorable body, we have received the resignation of Christopher Laureano from the Council on Disabilities, presently the Disability Commission. Please join me in thanking Mr. Laureano for his service to the city. For your information, I regret to inform your honorable body, we have received the resignation of Angela Ferrara from the Council on Disabilities, presently the Disability Commission. Please join me in thanking Ms. Ferrara for her service for the city. For your information, I regret to inform your honorable body, we have received the resignation of Stephanie Forte from the Council on Disabilities, presently the Disability Commission. Please join me in thanking Ms. Forte for her service to the city. I respectfully submit a communication from Superintendent of Public Works Michael Tyler regarding the need for funds to make repairs to roadways and sidewalks due to water breaks and other needed patchwork. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body transfer twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars from account Citywide Reserve Fund for transfer to account Public Works Trench Repair. On approval, the available balance in reserve fund for transfer will be two hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars and ten cents. Copies in your packets.
Public Works Committee, please, sir.
I respectfully submit a communication from Acting Health Agent Charles Flanagan regarding paying a fiscal year nineteen invoice for the solid waste department. The invoice is one thousand, two dollars higher than the purchase order. A vote authorizing payment is needed to satisfy this debt. There is no transfer of funds needed to pay this bill as there is sufficient funding in Fund twenty-six oh four. Copies in your packets.
Fudge and Appropriations Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Acting Health Agent Charles Flanagan regarding the need for funds due to the anticipated retirement of an employee in October. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body transfer eighteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents from account Citywide Reserve Fund for transfer to account Health Earn Time. Upon approval, the available balance in reserve fund for transfer will be two hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-three cents. Copies in your packets.
Personnel and Human Services Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Legal Secretary Allison Wood regarding items at the water department we'd like to declare surplus. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body to declare the following as surplus and available for disposition. Copies in your packets. They are one Poly Science Water Bath in poor condition, three LG Portable Air Conditioners in good condition, and one Isense Portable Air Conditioner in good condition.
City Property and Claims Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Legal Secretary Allison Wood regarding office equipment that the treasurer's office would like to declare surplus. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body to declare the following as surplus and available for disposition. Copies in your packets. There's a filed filing cabinet, fourteen drawers side by side. It is in good condition, but needs paint. Its value is a hundred dollars.
City Property and Claims Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Building Commissioner William McDonough regarding the need for funds to pay the electrical inspector for current inspections done for permits from, permits issued prior to July first. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body transfer four thousand dollars from account Protective Inspection Salary to account Protective Inspection Professional Services. Copies in your packets.
Fudge and Appropriations Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Library Director Christine Johnson regarding the receipt of the American Library Association, or ALA, Truth Racial Healing and Transformation Great Stories Club Growing Up Brave on the Margins Grant. This grant will include thirty-three paperback books, a programming grant of up to twelve hundred dollars for payment of racial healing practitioners and other program expenses, travel accommodation expenses paid for attendance to the two-day orientation workshop in Chicago, and additional training through periodic project webinars, a program planning guide, and other online support. There is no match for this grant. In accordance with Mass. Journal Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three, Chapter one, Section twelve, other revised ordinances of the City of Attleboro are hereby request your honorable body to approve expending such funds in any future grant amendments by the Attleboro Public Library. Copies in your packets.
Personnel and Human Services Committee, please.
As you are aware, on May twenty-first, twenty nineteen, your honorable body approved an appropriation of twenty-one thousand, nine hundred dollars to complete the required engineering design and construction oversight to repair the Farmers Pond Dam. I respectfully submit a communication from Superintendent of Public Works Michael Tyler regarding the need for funds now that the Weston and Sampson, now that Weston and Sampson has finalized these plans and has supplied us with the required materials breakdown, along with an excavator rental to perform the seepage repairs. Public Works will perform all repairs except the excavator work. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body transfer thirty-one thousand dollars from account Citywide Reserve Fund for transfer to account Public Works Dam Rehabilitation. Upon approval, the available balance in the reserve fund for transfer will be two hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-three cents. Copies in your packets.
Public Works Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Director of Planning and Development Gary Erasian regarding a lease and service agreement for Toshiba three oh one five AC photocopier for the Community Development Office. In accordance with section five dash eight lease slash lease purchase agreement of the revised ordinances of the City of Attleboro, I request your honorable body to approve a thirty-six month lease agreement between the City of Attleboro and Axion Business Technologies. The lease and service agreement will be funded in full by Community Development Block Grant. Copies in your packets.
City Property and Claims Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Director of Planning and Development Gary Erasian regarding the need to pay a fiscal year nineteen invoice from South Coast Legal Services in the amount of six hundred dollars. A vote authorizing payment is needed to satisfy this debt. There is no transfer of funds needed to pay these bills as there is sufficient funding in Fund twenty-two forty-six H. Copies in your packets.
Fudge and Appropriations Committee, please.
Sincerely, Paul Heroe, Mayor.
Thank you. And moving right along to other communications?
We do. The first one is a correspondence from the Attleboro Memorial, Chapter ninety-one, of the Disabled American Veterans Organization to request a permit for the annual forget-me-not drive at various locations throughout the city on October fifth, twenty nineteen, or a rain date of October twelfth, twenty nineteen.
License Committee, please.
We received correspondence from Legacy Communities Management Company for Sandcastle Manufactured Home Community discussing effort to institute rent control within Attleboro.
Ordnances, Elections, Legislative Matters Committee.
We received a request from National Grid and Verizon to locate pole three-three-two-four Rathman Wood Drive, fifteen feet southwest of current location and relocate pole three-three-two-three Rathman Wood Drive, five feet southeast of current location. The workers accommodate roadway layouts changes at the request of the city.
Public Works Committee, please.
And we received another request from National Grid and Verizon to relocate pole three-two-two-two Rathman Wood Drive, twenty-five feet west, and relocate pole three-three-one-nine Rathman Wood Drive, forty feet west. Also requested is the installation of two new poles. Pole thirty-three-twenty-one dash five Rathman Wood Drive, sixty-five feet east of existing pole three-three-two-two, and pole zero dash five Green Drive, ninety feet south of existing pole one. Public hearings are required for the new poles.
Thank you. Public Works Committee, please. Counselor Jackson would like to have a public hearing on this on September third.
Yes, I would. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. We will-
That is all, Mr. President.
Thank you. And at this time, we're going to, um, go into committee reports. And we have one committee reporting this evening. Committee meetings for everyone else have been reported for, um, Thursday, so at this time, I would recognize Counselor Conti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm reporting for the Capital Improvement City Development Committee. From the docket of July eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, I move to adopt the following emergency preamble. That the Attleboro City Council hereby declare that an emergency presently exists relative to the need to repair the water main leak off of Roy Avenue and that any other, that any delay in the authorization of an appropriation of funds to repair such leak would only jeopardize adequate water pressure near a school and delay the much-needed water main repairs on Reed Street. And therefore, hereby votes pursuant to the City Charter, section two dash nine B, an appropriation and loan order for these repairs to the amount of five hundred thousand dollars may be voted as an emergency measure.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is in order. Counselor Conti, any comments on the emergency preamble?
I do not.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none. At this time, a roll call vote is required. We'll begin with Counsel Blair.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Wissel?
Yes.
Vice President Fricke?
Yes.
Ms. Conti?
Yes.
Ms. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Tenye Zero-Nay?
Thank you. Motion passes.
From the docket of July eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, I move to approve the following loan order. That five hundred thousand dollars is appropriated for the permitting, bidding, construction oversight, and construction costs associated with the repair of water main leak off of Roy Avenue, Attleboro, Massachusetts. Collectively known as, quote, "the project." Including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow five hundred thousand dollars under chapters twenty-nine C of the general laws and/or section eight, paragraph, uh, paragraph five of the chapter forty-four of the general laws, or any other enabling authority, that the mayor is authorized to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out the project. Any premium received by the city upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this order, lest any such premium implied to the payment of such costs of issuance of such fa, bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of the cost approved by this order in accordance with chapter forty-four, section twenty of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such cost, pay such cost by a like manner. Further, the Attleboro Municipal Council hereby approves this loan authorization as an emergency measure pursuant to section two dash nine, paragraph B of the Attleboro City Charter.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any comments? Counselor Conti?
I do not.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none. A two-thirds roll call vote is required, and we'll begin with Counsel Jackson.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Conti?
Yes.
Ms. Corvus?
Yes.
Vice President Fricke?
Yes.
Mr. Delicio?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Tenye Zero-Nay?
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. President. From the docket of July eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, I move to approve the following loan order. That one million, seven hundred thousand dollars is appropriated for the permitting, bidding, construction, oversight, and construction costs associated with the replacement of approximately five thousand, two hundred linear feet of water mains, including the road restoration to Steer Street, Attleboro, Massachusetts, collectively known as, quote, "the project." Including the payments of all costs incidented or related thereto. And that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow one million, seven hundred thousand dollars under chapter twenty-nine C of the general laws and/or under section eight, paragraph five of chapter forty-four of the general law, or any other enabling authority, that the mayor is authorized to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out this project. Any premium received by the city upon the sale of any bonds or any notes approved by this order, lest any such premium implied by the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs appropriated, I'm sorry, approved by this order in accordance with chapter forty-four, section twenty of the general laws. Excuse me. Thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. Furtherance of the water department's fiscal twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-four Capital Improvement Program, Three-Cycle Municipal Water System Plan Annual Distribution System Rehabilitation Program, Part Three. My administration, the mayor's administration, is moving forward with a capital project to replace approximately fifty-two hundred squ, linear feet of water main on Steer Street. This project is explained in greater detail in the memorandum for the Superintendent of Waterworks, Courtney Woncho.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is in order. Any comments? Counselor Conti?
No, sir. It seems very detailed.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we require a roll call vote, and we'll begin with two.